Good evening, everybody. I have a motion to reconvene into open session. Motion, Mrs. Weiss, second to Mrs. Momalito. All in favor? Five zero. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Motion, Mrs. Momalito, second to Dr. Siddiqui. All in favor? Five zero. Dr. Bossert, that brings us up to our accommodations portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Tomio, and welcome to the community and our students that are present tonight. Before I proceed with accommodations, I do want to offer an apology to those present. I am sorry for the delayed start to our meeting. I provided the board with a rather robust executive session agenda that we were reviewing prior to the meeting, and I talk a lot, so my apologies for the delayed start. I always appreciate the board's flexibility in inviting members of our school community to recognize and honor at board meetings. Tonight, it gives me great pleasure to call upon our high school principal, Ms. Brzinski, who will help us to recognize some outstanding students of John Glenn High School.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Bossert, District Administration, members of the Board of Education, and members of the Elwood community. It gives me great pleasure to recognize two outstanding students from John Glenn High School this evening, Trinity House and Anson Kwan. As you know, back in October, we recognized both of these students for achieving status as the national semifinalists. We invited them back to join us this evening so that we can officially commend them for earning the prestigious accomplishment of salutatorian and valedictorian, respectively. So with that, I would like to begin by sharing a few remarks about each of these two impressive young adults. First, our salutatorian, Trinity House. And I was going to say Trinity, please join me at the podium, but you're here, so, welcome. Trinity is truly a remarkable young lady. Academically speaking, Trinity has taken the most challenging courses that we offer at John Glenn High School, and she has earned a weighted GPA of ninety-nine point six-two-three-nine. She will graduate this June summa cum laude with a New York State Advanced Regions diploma with honors with mastery in math and science. Trinity also has a very vibrant extracurricular schedule. She is the secretary of the math club, a member of Unity with Diversity, a freshman buddy mentor. She participates in independent science research, is a member of the National Honor Society, and is vice president of the National Art Honor Society. Very well. She has also earned some impressive accolades during her years at John Glenn High School. In tenth grade, she and her team won the Northwell Health Medical Marvel's Best Essay Award and Best Presentation Award for their fourteen-page academic essay on the importance of vaccinations. She also, we'll keep clapping, so I'm, she, she also won the bronze medal on the National Italian Exam. She is a National Merit Scholar and an AP Scholar with Distinction. And as an extremely talented artist, her artwork was chosen to be displayed as part of the sixtieth Long Island Artist Exhibition at the Huntington Art League. Trinity has also dedicated her time to give back to her community. She has helped to organize a charity drive for the town of Smithtown Animal Shelter. She reads books to children as a storytime volunteer for the Elwood Public Library and is a pet care volunteer for the Northport Cat Rescue Association. Trinity has also been studying martial arts since the sixth grade at the Trigon Academy of Martial Arts, where she is currently a volunteer assisting coach. So it should come as no surprise that Trinity has also earned a brown belt in jujitsu. Trinity is truly the complete package. I am confident that she will continue to meet with success as she pursues her post-secondary endeavors in biomedical engineering. It is with great pleasure that I present to you the John Glenn High School Salutatorian, Ms. Trinity House. And for those of you who have visited the main office recently, we have one of Trinity's brilliant pieces of art. She painted strawberries, so if you're in the main office, take a look at it. It looks like a photograph, but it is indeed a very beautiful, beautiful painting. It's pretty, it's pretty impressive, so. I would now like to recognize our valedictorian, Mr. Anson Kwan. Like Trinity, Anson's academic accomplishments are plenty. Simply put, too many to mention, but I will do my best. Among the many, Anson has done an incredible job as well, taking on the most challenging coursework that we have to offer at John Glenn High School, and he has earned a weighted GPA of ninety-nine point six-two-eight-three. He will also graduate this June summa cum laude with a New York State Advanced Regions diploma with mastery in math and science. In addition to being the valedictorian, Anson has also earned some impressive accolades during his years at John Glenn High School. Again, he is a National Merit semifinalist, who has recently been notified that he is a finalist, so we wish him luck in that process. He has participated in NISMIA and earned all state and all county as a bass singer. He earned the Xerox Award for Innovation and Information Technology from the University of Rochester. He was the recipient of the Band Directors Award and Choral Directors Award, and he was awarded the gold medal for the National Italian Exam. Anson accomplished all of this while maintaining a robust extracurricular activity schedule. He participated in Boy's State, where he was elected state senator. He is the varsity starter for Knowledge Masters. He is also a freshman buddy mentor, a member of acapella wood and jazz bands, and is the team captain for cross-country and track. Outside of Glenn, Anson is a teacher at the Covenant Church and has served as a carnival staffer for the church as well. Overall, Anson is a brilliant student athlete and a talented musician. He is involved, well-rounded, social, yet very humble. While Anson is still deciding where he will pursue his major in chemistry in the fall, I am excited to follow his journey in life and watch the wonderful accomplishments begin to pile up. It gives me great pleasure to present to you our valedictorian, Mr. Anson Kwan. To the both of you, I know I speak on behalf of the entire Elwood School District when I say that I am confident that you will continue to meet with great success, and I thank you both for being such a point of pride for the Elwood School District. Congratulations.
Ms. House and Ms. Kwan, do you want to come up and take a picture as well so you're closer? Yeah, please, come do so.
I always have the challenge of like truncating all of their accomplishments. That was just like scratching the surface, so congratulations again. It also gives me great pleasure to recognize another group of talented students this evening, our mock trial students. Our mock trial students are some of the most dedicated and passionate students we have at John Glenn High School. Their commitment to their team is unrelenting, and as a result, they made it to the Elite Eight this year. Their success is no doubt a direct result of their hard work and preparation, but is also a result of exemplary mentoring and guidance provided to them by some exceptional members of the Elwood community, whom I would like to recognize this evening. So as I call your name, please join me at the podium, Ms. Megan Geiser. Yep. Thank you, Ms. Geiser, for serving as the mock trial advisor for several years. You undoubtedly laid a strong foundation for our students that enabled them to meet with such success. Thank you very much. Mr. Anthony Moreno, will you please join me? Thank you so much, Mr. Moreno, for volunteering your time to serve as the attorney advisor for our students. Your professional expertise was invaluable and is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. And last but not least, Ms. Marsha MacLeod. There are very few people who could take the baton from Ms. Geiser and continue to lead these students, so I want to thank Ms. MacLeod for being brave enough to advise your former elementary to advise your former elementary-age students at the high school by taking over where Ms. Geiser left off. Your guidance and high expectations helped our students earn the Elite Eight status in a very competitive competition. Thank you so much for rising up and taking on this endeavor. I often say that it takes a village to raise a child. And I want to thank Abby Rothleider for helping me to identify the new advisor. We all work together to enable our students to meet with great success. And this triumvirate over here deserves another round of applause. Ms. McLeod will now do the pleasure of recognizing our very talented members of the 2021-2022 mock trial team. Ms. McLeod. First up, we have... First up, we have Matthew Charlton. Next, Ms. Sarah Collins. Ms. Gianna Cook. Mr. Logan Domenchek. Mr. Evan Faraci. And his brother, Sean Faraci. Ms. Bella Marina. Ms. Grace Madder. Ms. Eva Musgrove. Mr. Mason Navon. Next, we have one of our officers and the glue that held our team together, Ms. Abby Rothleider. Another one of our officers, Mr. Max Lozinski. Ms. Ariana Vuthas. And last but not least, Ms. Victoria Weisberg. Katie Shebel could not be here with us tonight, but she was also one of our officers who helped all of our team get to the final eight. Thank you so much for allowing me to lead you and to get you to where you are. For those of you who are graduating, we know that your future will be bright. And to the rest of you, the same. Thank you for a wonderful season.
Parents, if you want to come up, we'll stand. Parents, if you want to come up for a photo, we'll stand in the room for a moment.
Where are we looking?
While you're taking photos, on behalf of the Board of Education, we want to commend and congratulate you all. Goodbye, future litigators, and thank you and congratulations. And to our... Still going? No, we're good, right? And to our valedictorians, salutatorians, you are good to go as well. And congratulations. We look forward to seeing you at graduation. And phenomenal accomplishments to the both of you, really. Hats off, keep up the great work. And we look forward to seeing where your future lies. See the rest of you in the courtroom? Well, hopefully not, but maybe we will. Have a great night.
You can just say that.
All right, and once again, congratulations to everybody. That would normally bring us up to our student liaison, who unfortunately is unable to be with us this evening. So we're going to move on to our first residence remarks. Wait, wait, I take that back. I'm sorry, 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 sorry. I put it next through everything. Dr. Bossert, that brings us up to superintendent's report.
That's Mr. Tomio's wave. He's heard enough from me tonight. If our guests in the back of the room just want to help us bring the meeting back to order.
Ladies, if you mind, and gentlemen, if you could just please take this into the hallway.
Security, if you could help us just let folks know.
Remember they're future attorneys, be careful. Choose your words carefully. All right, Dr. Bossert, sorry about that. Yes, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Tomio. I'm going to be very brief in my remarks, as we do have a full agenda tonight. But I do want to draw the board's attention to a wonderful experience I had earlier this week. One of the great joys I have as superintendent is really interacting with our students, like the wonderful individuals we honor tonight. And COVID put a little hiccup in my annual tradition of having my student-focused group, senior-focused group, and sitting with the students and really just interacting over some pizza and really hearing their attitudes and perceptions of our work within the Elwood School District. Using a business model, we call it a customer satisfaction survey. We call it an exit interview. And the insight that the students provide during those conversations is always valuable, useful, and has really done a great deal to shape the goals and the vision of our district. So I was able to meet with 18 of our senior, members of our senior class yesterday, which seems a lifetime ago. And it was a wonderful two periods we spent together. We barely scratched the surface of the items that the seniors wanted to discuss and bring to my attention. And we have scheduled a future meeting in a couple of weeks. It was really wonderful. They were very candid. And they were so positive and enthusiastic about the work that they had accomplished with their classmates, with their teachers. And really, I was dripping with Elwood pride when I left that meeting. And I look forward to reporting to the board and the community more about the conclusions of those conversations as they take place. But what a wonderful, wonderful first meeting. And I really miss that I hadn't had that opportunity for that type of intimate forum with the students in too long a period of time. So good, good things happening. Ms. Lozinski was present, and I thank you for helping me to put it together. And I think she would agree that the kids couldn't have been more positive about their experiences. It was really very, very rewarding. With that, the other portion of my report tonight will be an update from the technology committee. As the board and community is aware, the board has several functioning committees that focus on different aspects of our governance. The technology committee is the administrative liaison to our technology committee. Mr. Tranquino is with us tonight to deliver the report.
Thank you, Dr. Bossert, and thank you to the board for the opportunity to give the technology committee update this evening. And a special thank you to Mrs. Weiss and to Mr. Scorola for their continued and valued support and participation in the technology committee each year. So thank you to you. Every three years, school districts are required to submit an instructional technology plan to New York State Department of Education. The SKATE gave districts whose plans would do last year, which was us, an additional year due to COVID. So this was the year to get the plan together, and this was the focus of the technology committee this year. So with assistance from the committee, three primary goals were established, as most other aspects of the plan relate directly to the stated goals. Goal number one is an overarching goal, which is fundamental to really any technology plan, to sustain existing instructional technologies to include student notebooks and other technologies with appropriate refresh cycles. This encompasses everything tech. Also, everyone who uses technology, faculty, students, and administration. We had great discussions around technology refresh cycles, what's appropriate, what's necessary. And we went on to security, technology, infrastructure, and budgeting. Goal two, a targeted goal with impact across K-12 and has a planned three-year implementation, which fits the three-year tech plan perfectly. And that is to replace the aging smartboard projection systems with smartboard interactive HD flat panel displays in all the district classrooms. The existing boards were installed back in 2008. Elwood was one of the first districts online to have K-12 smartboards in every, smartboard in every classroom K-12 throughout the district. The installation of the new boards is being delayed because there are some installation items that have been backordered due to the supply chain backorder, especially in technology items. But we look forward to that soon. Our third goal came about from committee discussion on the importance of support, technology support, and specifically, professional development in technology. Another overarching goal, and it reads, "To empower educators to continually strengthen their practice and effectively integrate technology to support curriculum and improve student achievement through the expansion of professional development opportunities." Again, lots of discussions centered around evolving instructional technologies, providing exciting new teaching and learning experiences and opportunities when in the hands of well-trained and well-supported professionals. So in short, this is what kept our committee very busy this year. The tech plan was approximately 30 pages, was submitted to our regional BOCs to be vetted, and has been submitted to the State Department of Education. Thank you, Dr. Bossert, for that, for their approval. Once approved, it will be posted to the district website, as our existing plan is there now. Special thanks to Ms. Krista Albrecht, who is our instructional technology specialist. She took on a great deal of work and a major role in the tech plan process this year. So thank you to Krista. And thank you for the opportunity to do the update.
Do any board members have any questions? Or do either of the chairs have any comments to make?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Tranquino for heading the committee, for the community members that have come out. We had many faculty and staff members also join us at our meetings, which is wonderful to hear what's going on in the classroom. Another thing that I found very interesting is we learned about some possible new camera technology to replace some of our cameras as they get older, which would...
to replace some of our cameras as they get older, which would enhance our security. So I really enjoyed that presentation, but I think our committee did a really wonderful job. I enjoyed working with Ms. Weiss, and I think we're in good hands with our technology moving forward, and once again, another reason I'm proud to live in Elwood. Thank you.
Thank you, I agree with Mr. Scorola a hundred percent on all that. And it's just, it's a wonderful committee, Gene, you always are a great leader and have foresight of looking all the way down the road, so it's not, I mean, and the Chromebooks and having COVID hit us was one of those, you know, you had that foresight to bring that to us, and we were in so much of a better position as a result of that, so I've enjoyed my time. I think I'm one of the senior people that have been on that Technology Committee, and I refuse to give it up just because of your leadership, and so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss, and for the support of the board, thank you for the technology initiatives that we've accomplished over the years. And I have a great team behind me, which does a lot of this work. Proud, very proud of the team that I have in the Technology Department as well, so thanks to them.
Yes, your team is wonderful.
Yes.
Krista, I'm sure I'm going to forget people, but you're, you know, the small but mighty team you have, and anytime you ask them to do something, it's done immediately, and like I said, we don't have the biggest technology department, but everything you ask of your team is done immediately. So once again, please congratulate your entire team on behalf of the board for all their hard work.
Thank you.
If the board does not have any objections, I would invite Ms. Brzezinski and Mr. Tranquino to depart if they so choose, as I know they both have to be back here early tomorrow, and thank you very much for your contributions this evening. Eileen, don't go anywhere. We had our first documented complaint that we held a board meeting during Met's opening day from Mr. Moreno, who we honored earlier. I filed that under the Yankees play tomorrow.
All right, now that moves us up to our residence remarks, our first residence remarks. Okay, the board encourages all residents to attend its meetings, and this section of the agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves, state whether they are a resident of the Elwood School District and any organization they represent at this meeting. Comments related to district business or any agenda item should be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed three minutes. Board policy 1230. Questions or comments concerning matters which are not on the agenda will be taken under consideration and may be discontinued by the president. Public discussion of matters relating to staff, students, or others at which their reputation, privacy, or right to due process could be in some way violated is prohibited. Thank you.
Kimberly Cameron, resident of Elwood School. And I have two children in the district. First, I'd like to thank you all, as well as Dr. Hall, I'm sorry, she's not present today. In reference, oh, she is, oh, I'm sorry, oh, hiding, okay, well, thank you very much. The pilot of the math program is superior to the Eureka Common Core Math, which was horrific on so many levels. So I was, you know, tentative in terms of the timing of the math program and the pilot. I understand as an educator the reasons why the pilot had to happen now, and I hope it will sustain for next year. I don't know where the status is of that, but I'd like to thank you, as well as the curriculum, the overall committees, and decisions that were made on that. So thank you. And I just wanted to ask, I saw that the budget was up. Now, this, our school budget will not have any adverse impact at all based on the state's delay of the New York State budget? Is that accurate?
We have both questions to be answered, give me one second.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dr. Bossert.
Thank you for your support of the pilot. The district followed a very elaborate process in order to arrive at a recommendation that's on tonight's agenda. So pending board approval, we'll be moving forward with the Envision Math Series that was piloted in many of our classrooms, and we look forward to introducing K-6 next year, and thank you also, Dr. Hall, for chairing that and making sure it happened with such great fidelity. To answer your question about the state budget, it does impact the board's adoption this evening. You'll note that the resolution reads a bit differently than typical. April 1st is deadline in New York State for states to adopt a budget, and at that time, we receive definitive word of what our aid will be from New York State. Because the budget hasn't been adopted, we are using what the proposal for aid was in tonight's board adoption. Should there be a change made in New York State, the board is authorizing the school business official to make adjustments to our budget in order to match any change. Further insight is we don't anticipate any changes to our aid. We have been made very well aware that the delays at the state level to adopting the budget have to do with language regarding bail reform, and there is no anticipation that there'll be any changes to the aid numbers we receive. So we are confident to bring the budget forward to the board as drafted, based upon the numbers we have received in the state, but the board is authorizing our school business official, Ms. Dunkle, to make adjustments to that tax, property tax report card, should there be a fluctuation to our aid. We would have to adjust our spending plan if the state adjusts our aid. We don't anticipate that occurring.
Okay, I'm glad that's not an anticipation, because the timeframe of this is very close to the actual budget. It's, yeah, so, but thank you very much for your response. And just an update, as you know, today in Hop Dog, Senator, State Senator George Barello, Assemblyman Mike Lawler, and Assemblyman Chris Togg, with other lawmakers, announced the lawsuit suing the DOH and the governor, Governor Hockel, regarding the nineteen million New York State residents that will be impacted on the decision that was made April 5th. This Monday, the DOH committee voted unanimously in defiance of the Nassau County Supreme Court case ruled January 24th, 2022, to illegally re-adopt unlawful emergency regulations. And a case in point, the former bill that I discussed here prior of New York State Assembly 8416 proves that we're not out of the woods regarding Hockel and the DOH. They have moved towards Regulation Number 10 NYCRR 2.13 in regards to the change at their will to isolate and quarantine procedures. In moving ahead, this allows the DOH to force isolation and quarantine without any type of proof. So I just wanted to give an update in moving forward. So this is kind of still on the forefront of New York State, and we are certainly not out of the woods. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cameron. Any other residents wishing to speak at this residence remarks?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Kern, resident. I have two children in the district. I just wanted to speak briefly on some of the issues of the budget that is going to be up for vote tonight. I have several very severe concerns about the budget, specifically the numbers, which I think in light of all that's going on in the world are simply far too high. Because if you look at, from the community point of view with the budget, what's the main issue? Did we get what we spent, what we asked for, what we paid for over the last few years? And I think unfortunately, the answer is no. 2019, 2020, three months, schools are closed, no live teaching, no even remote teaching. 2020, 2021, kids weren't back in school full-time for the entire district until April. Sports didn't start until, say, February or March. This year, we're getting a little better, but we had six, almost six months of kids in masks, still arbitrary COVID restrictions required by the state. Now, on top of all of this, this year, we have record-high inflation that the government has said is going to get worse. Right now, it's seven percent, it's not going to get better. The Treasury Secretary said this exact thing yesterday. So this district is now asking for an increase of almost two, of 2.9%, which is amongst the eighteen highest on the island. Hundred-and-twenty-four districts, only eighteen are higher than us. Now, maybe those districts are not doing well. What I see here in this district, we are doing well. Look at the combination of things that have been accomplished with the current budget, grants, and bonds. We have a new auditorium, new band uniforms, a new cafeteria with TVs, and brand-new booths for all the students in the high school. We even have solar panels that have been sitting on top of the building for nearly two years. I still don't think they've been turned on. In short, these are not the signs of a struggling district. There's enough going on with inflation, increased costs. A budget of this amount is not in the best interest of this community at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kern.
Hi, my name is Agapi Bell, resident, speaking just for myself and on behalf of my family. I'm glad I'm going after Mr. Kern, because what I wanted to ask about tonight, he mentioned the band uniforms. I recently found out that they're not going to be here in time for this fall. And I recall asking about that and being told that they would not be here for this past fall, but they would be here for next fall. And with the rising freshmen, you know, I was, I wanted to bring that to the board's attention, because it was not, I didn't know until this week that there was a delay, and, oh, is that off? A delay, am I too close again?
You're good, you're good.
Oh. So, and even, you know, Mr. Kern mentioned new uniforms. I think there's a perception that they're like arriving any day now, and I found out they're not going to have them in August, September, October. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, and my disappointment on that. And the other part, when I looked through the slides today in preparation for tonight, it was, I would like to see what the fixed costs are, I'm so, it was nice, the graphs were great and everything, and it was really helpful to me to understand where the numbers come from. I would really like to see, and I don't know if other residents would like to, these are the things that went up, health insurance, and we can't change that, you know, so that would have helped me, be like, okay, this makes sense, because this is fixed. This is happening to us, you know, we're not deciding to do it. And my other question was, is it appropriate to ask where the new teacher is going to be, which grade level or discipline that's going to? That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. I can answer one of those questions at least. Dr. Bossert, we need your help with the other two. As far as the fixed costs, yes, and to piggyback to Mr. Kern's commentary before, a hundred percent. The budget that we worked in with this year is going to have increases, healthcare and, you know, other costs is what you spoke to. So that is for the reason of the increase. The other things, Mr. Kern, to speak to you before, solar panels and such, were things that were covered under our bond, which was significantly approved by the voters of our community. So that is separate from the general budget in which the Board of Education and the administration work under. So just to clarify the two of those, and also to touch upon the instruction model, it may not have been ideal, but I do I do want to remark that Elwood did a phenomenal job in an ideal, in a non-ideal time. We didn't know what was being thrown at us, and our educators rose to the occasion. Did we, were we perfect? No. Was any educator at the time perfect? No, it was something that was unknown. And I think the teachers did the best they could with the tools that they had, and I think they rose very high to the occasion. We were fortunate, as Mr. Tranquino spoke before, we had the technology in place. Some districts didn't have the affordability or the opportunity to have the technology, so I hear your concerns, and a hundred percent, was it the same instruction in which they're normally receiving? No, it wasn't, but it wasn't just unique to Elwood. That was throughout the entire state, throughout the entire country. There was a global pandemic that took place that altered the instruction that we were used to. So those are the two things I can answer. I do not have the answer to the band uniforms, Dr. Bossert, nor do I have the answer to the instructional FTE, which I don't think we have, but I don't want to speak to it.
Mrs. Bell, candidly, it's the first I hear of a delay in the band uniforms. I see my business official and our treasurer speaking about it. I don't know the answer to that question, and I don't want to put the business office on the spot, but I will look into it tomorrow, because clearly it's our desire to have the uniforms on the backs of our students as quickly as possible. It's something we've looked forward to for a very long time. That said, I'll look into it tomorrow, of course. The additional classroom teacher right now is targeted for third grade. Unless we see some fluctuations to our enrollment at the elementary level, we think that's where that individually best placed, which will drop the average class size in the third grade from approximately twenty-five to approximately twenty-one, which we think is of great advantage to our students. So assuming the community supports the budget, including there is no other grand fluctuations, that's where the additional teacher is identified for.
Thank you, Dr. Bossert. I saw the smile, reduction in class size, right up your alley. Any other residence remarks? Okay, that closes this portion of residence remarks. Moving up to our first presentation this evening, we have two. The first one is our Budget Workshop Number Four. Ms. Dunkle.
While Ms. Dunkle is preparing and coming to the podium, I do want to set the stage for the board and the community, and Mr. Kern, it's someone in response to your concern. It is really a difficult year for school finance. The individual stories that each district is telling vary greatly. Each individual community has to make decisions of what they believe to be in the best interest of their program and the financial concerns of their community. And I applaud this Board of Education of having significant conversation, not only this year, but in prior years, about striking a balance, striking a balance to make sure that the needs of the students are being met, and that means that some questions are answered with no, and we'll have to wait, but making sure that the quality of our instructional program and other opportunities is at an outstanding level. I'm very proud to compare Elwood's instructional program and the opportunities we present to students with any district in Suffolk County and Long Island. I think we are jewel in the crown of Long Island, and we are a district that is often compared to others in a favorable way. It takes reasonable finances to do that, and part of that is making sure that the burden on the taxpayer is something we feel the community can support. I believe our community values the education we provide our students, understands the balance between equality program and home value, and I think that some of the accolades we've received over the last few years have helped that return on investment. We know the blue ribbon being placed on John Glenn High School increased property values in Elwood by ten percent. We know that this building being named a school to watch will have a similar impact on the way our middle school program is viewed within the state and within the country. We're very proud of those accolades and accomplishments, and we're very happy that we've been able to do it by presenting very reasonable tax rate increases to the community. Two-point-nine percent will help us to maintain, and that's our conversation tonight about maintaining the level of excellence we currently enjoy. There is definitively some fluctuation this year between the stories that each district is telling because of the level of state aid that each district received. We received a very nominal increase to our aid. Foundation aid is being leveled for districts across the state, and that has created winners and losers. Elwood was neither. We remained constant. There were some districts close to us that received record amounts of increases to their aid and afforded them financial opportunities they've never been able to enjoy. We would very much like to be on that list. It was not what occurred. There is a formula that dictates the amount of aid that school districts receive, and that formula landed us in a place where we're presenting the budget level tonight. I would love to say to the community, we are flush with cash. We will be reducing your tax levy burden from the school district's perspective, but that's simply not the case. And to present a budget to the board tonight at a levy less than what we are presenting would put the district in a position of making targeted reductions and willing away at a program that we're very proud of. It was just three years ago, we had to present a budget to the community that had a $1.1 million decrease. Even with that, we had to present a budget that increased taxes slightly to the community, but we were forced to make a $1.1 million decrease. We have not yet recovered from those reductions, we have not yet restored those positions, we have not yet fully financed those programs that went away when those reductions were met. And as much as we would like to bring a number of those things back, we're not in a position this year to make those recommendations. So tonight's presentation of the budget is about stability. It's about striking a balance between what our students need and what we feel our community can afford, and these decisions aren't entered into lightly. There is a great deal of thought, process, discussion, deliberation, and care that goes into this presentation. So with that, the steward of our finances, our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Ms. Dunkle. for Business, Ms. Dunkle.
Thank you, Dr. Bossert. Good evening, community members and board members, District Administration. So tonight is a culmination of all the work that has been going on towards the budget since October of 2021. We, that's when we start the budget process, and tonight is a culmination after receiving consensus from the board to build a budget. So tonight, we are presenting the best budget we feel is, will support all of our programs for the school districts and commit, it's a commitment to the community as well. So, at the March 14th board meeting, as I just mentioned, the board did reach consensus and directed the administration to build a budget at a 2.9% tax levy increase. The budget was developed successfully, successfully within these parameters, with no significant reductions to our program, services, or staffing. The proposed budget for tonight is $69,181,000, $181,081,071. This represents an increase from the 2122 budget, a $2.267 million, or 3.39%. As Ms. Cameron asked a question, the district has not yet received our final state aid numbers for 2223. Our current, our current increase is roughly 100, 860,000. But we may need to change that, our budget, based on the numbers once New York State budget has passed. As Dr. Bossert mentioned, the, the overall budget number may not change, but our revenue sources may have to. But again, we're not anticipating that in our state aid numbers are, we're, excuse me, we're expecting our state aid numbers to remain flat. This is just a snapshot, once again, to go over the tax cap and the tax levy. I typically discuss this at each of the different or various budget presentations we go through. It's just to help the community understand how the district calculates the tax cap that we're permitted to go out to. So based on the information in this formula, and again, board, if you have any questions, our allowable cap for this year came in at 3.4% with a levy of $51.3 million. That is the allowable cap. But based on conversations with the board and the administration, oh, excuse me, the board gave consensus to build a budget at 2.9%. So staying below the cap is a purposeful attempt to minimize the impact on the local taxpayers, and it also allows for a simple majority vote. And I just wanted to bring up two points. I know, Mr. Kern, you had asked a question. 2.9% for Elwood is roughly $1.4 million increase. A 2.9% increase for a different budget, for a different school district, or a 2% for another school district that may have a very large budget, could be in the millions of dollars. So I'm not minimizing the impact on Elwood, but it's just difficult. I'm trying to make the point, it's difficult to compare one district's 2.9% to another district's 2.9% or 2%. So I just wanted the community to have their understanding. And again, Elwood has unique, unique situations, just like every other school district does. We have, we are, excuse me, we're in the middle of a $34 million bond, so we have debt service that we have to pay back. Some of the items you brought up, or the community has discussed in the past, as well as the board, is our capital bonds. As was just mentioned, the John Glenn High School auditorium was just redone, as was the cafeteria. We have new roofs. That money, the money that we use to pay for those projects to be completed, has to be paid back, and that's part of our general fund budget. So that's, that's an expense that, again, at this point, we have no control over because we already borrowed the money. And that was approved as part of the bond that was approved by the voters. So certain expenses like that, that do improve the infrastructure of the districts are required within the budget. This is an overview of our proposed revenue budget. You'll see line by line. We have the tax levy, which I was just referencing. There's roughly a $1.4 million increase, or 2.9%. Our state aid increase is roughly 860,006%. We receive a pilot, we're on a 15-year schedule for pilot monies. That goes up each year a small amount. The change for this year is roughly 47,000. Our reserves and fund balance is roughly $2.3 million. That has not changed, it's remained flat since last year. And our other miscellaneous earnings, we're seeing a decrease. Part of that is due to a decrease in tuition from students who do not live within Elwood, but pay money to attend Elwood. So we have a student who's been attending Elwood School District, paying tuition. He is graduating, so will no longer be receiving that money. So that's part of the deficit or the reduction you see in that line item. So the total revenue, which will match the expenses, is $69,181,000. These next few slides is a line-by-line picture of the expenditure budget. This is the budget that we're proposing for the evening. As you can see, some of the main expenses, and I'll go over this in slides that are further on the presentation, operations of our plant, which is mainly our buildings and grounds, is roughly $3 million. That's a big ticket, I, a big ticket item. Our regular school, which is the last item on here, is roughly $7.3 million, though that money is for general instruction K to 12. It includes all of the programs for K to 12 students. It includes some technology support, teacher salaries, benefits. So each of these line items does not represent one thing in particular. I'll use the business administration line as a, as a sample. The business administration line is $597,000. Some people think that that makes up one or two people's salaries, but that's not the case. That represents eight individual salaries, plus benefits, plus equipment, materials, supplies, our contractual obligations, things like that. So there's a lot of information behind these items. And Mrs. Bell, I know you were asking about, you know, certain fixed costs, but it's, it would be probably hundreds and hundreds of pages to try to explain all those pieces. So I just wanted to highlight some of the bigger ticket items. Another one, as people are used to, is our transportation line. That's roughly $4.8 million. And just to remind the community that we're now going into year two of a five-year contract with our, with Huntington Coach, who was awarded the RFP from last year. So again, I mean, I know the presentation is available online, and we'll be open to questions at the end of the presentation. But as you can see, each of these line-by-line items total up to the $69.181 million budget, which matches the revenue side, which is required by New York State. This is just a little picture, I guess I wanted to share. It just shows the focus of the school district. The focus is always on the students, and all of the surrounding pieces just represent all the different staff categories that we have. We have administration, technology, teaching assistants, clerical, buildings and grounds, power professionals. But each one of these categories comes with salaries and benefits. Again, and it is, it is a large expense that all school districts take on. But again, the goal and the focus is always on the students. I just wanted to remind the board and the community of This is a snapshot of our proposed staffing for next year. As Dr. Bossert discussed, we have, we're looking, included in the budget is a, one additional FTE in the teaching category, and we're also proposing an additional staff member in the Buildings and Ground Department. All other categories are remaining flat. So those two enhancements are currently included in the proposed budget. Dr. Bossert will now speak about the proposed budget highlights.
Thank you, Ms. Dunkle. So as I mentioned in my preamble, the goal of this year's budget is to really maintain the quality and excellence of our program. As I mentioned, we have a program we're very proud of, and we want to be able to move forward and continue the fine work that has been taking place in our classrooms and our athletic fields, our auditoriums, et cetera. So the first bullet, continued focus on academic priorities and diverse cost offerings to maximize student learning and achievement. We have been able over the last number of years to add electives, AP offerings, college credit-bearing courses at the high school, and lots of diverse support services to our program. This budget will help us to maintain that. I do have to give a little caveat, share with the board today that I spent some time at a workshop at Stony Brook University for superintendents throughout the county. And one of the discussions was about the news media literacy program that we introduced at both the middle school and the high school in the last few years. And Dr. Hall, thank you for taking the lead on that initiative. One of our teachers at the high school, Mr. Epstein, social studies teacher, teaches this coursework to our students in a course that bears college credit. And he shared with the superintendents today that 28 of our students would be graduating with college credit in this course that they'd be able to use to transfer any, to any post-secondary endeavor. 28 students leaving with credit in this particular area of news literacy makes John Glenn the top credit-bearing high school in Suffolk County. And when you compare the size of our senior class of 200 with the other high schools along on, the fact that we are number one in that category is very impressive, and thanks to the work of our faculty, staff, and administration who made that happen. We are going to continue to enhance our student wellness and mental health. All of our current support stu, services that we make available to our students are maintained within this budget. Last year, the board took the action of adding a social worker to our staff. Years, the year prior to that, we added a psychologist to our staff. We recognize that our students are faced with challenges today that they haven't faced before, and the fact that we have the right personnel, the right programs, the right curriculum initiatives, additional health instruction taking place within our classrooms, we think is very beneficial to their overall well-being and our focus on the whole child. We will preserve or lessen on class size across the board, K to 12. The only real area of concern was third grade. The enhancement of an additional classroom teacher within the budget proposal will help us to address that one area. Continued targeted support for students at risk. The operating budget preserves our AES services, our remedial writing, reading, and math services, the different program, the different programs we have in place, some of which Ms. Kelly Gorman will highlight later. Some are grant-funded, which are outside the budget, but we'll be working towards identifying those that are of greatest need to include in future operating budgets. Mr. Tranquina went through our technology initiatives, so we're going to continue to expand. Recently, we received the next generation of Chromebooks. Our teachers are using them now. The students will get them eventually. They are touchscreen. They are fully convertible to tablet form. They have stylus capabilities. This is the next generation of Chromebook that our students will be receiving as the transition takes place. We are looking to continue the growth in our literacy programs, including our partnership with Teachers College Reading and Writing Program, which is the K to eight program. We'll continue our focus on academic vocabulary, phonics at our most primary level, and handwriting focus, which we've heard over and over from parents as something that they're looking for us to enhance and focus, and we'll be doing that. We'll continue our support for the diverse offerings in athletics, co-curricular, and the arts, and our opportunity, opportunities for students with disabilities. Ms. Kelly Gorman, again, will mention some of those initiatives tonight. But I am very, very pleased at the addition of our Unified Basketball League. Ms. Kelly Gorman, Mr. Shanahan got together and created a wonderful opportunity for our students with disabilities and their peer mentors that they'll be working with. It's a really wonderful program. And before we even start, we're looking to expand it, and there's some fall sports being identified for potentially heading next year. A continued emphasis on maximizing health and safety initiatives. While we are in a lull of COVID, we are not naive enough to think that our challenges of COVID are behind us. We're looking to look at the air quality and ventilation systems within our buildings. We're looking at making sure that all the equipment and services that we put in place for deep cleaning and such remain in place, and that we have the staff in place to make sure that we're doing everything we can to support health and safety. And our continued focus on post-secondary opportunities, as I mentioned earlier, we like to give our students a leg up on the competition when they leave us. Our AP offerings are so diverse and great in number that, once again, we compare favorably the high schools, some twice and three times our size. We have more AP offerings in this building than in most high schools that are much, much larger. And the number of credits that students can leave John Glenn High School with is growing each year, and we look to continue to expand it next year. So again, I don't have a lot to bring to the board of a community of addition, new. This year is about maintaining, enhancing, and really highlighting the wonderful work that is already taking place. The proposed budget allows us to continue to provide a program of excellence to our students.
Moving on, this is just a graphic to show the three components of the budget. There's administrative, capital, and program component. We typically go over each of these individually in the first two or three presentations that I've given. So this is just to highlight the portion that each one represents. And as you can see, the program component, which is directly related to the classroom, again, as I mentioned before, everything that we do here in the school district is to support the students. But you can see the largest portion of the budget, which is roughly $50 million, goes directly to the program costs, as it should. This is just another slide to, to show you the different breakdowns for various expenses throughout the budget. You could see salaries represent the largest portion at 47%. We have benefits, transportation, special education, debt service, and other. Each of these items, especially salaries and benefits, unfortunately have contractual obligations. Many of them, many of the benefits, especially the medical, their rates are issued to us, are given to us by New York State, as are the TRS and ERS benefits, which is related to pension costs. All of those numbers are driven directly from New York State, and again, we have no control over them. Salaries, we have collective bargaining agreements with most all of our staff members. And again, that's something that is negotiated and budgeted throughout the term of the collective bargaining agreement. And I just wanted to mention, as Dr. Bossert mentioned earlier today, when we made those 1.1 million reductions a few years ago, many of our bargaining units, if not all of them, took hard freezes and saved the district a lot of money. So had we not done that, some of these costs would be increased even more than they are. So I just wanted to point that out as well. And again, the debt service, it shows a 7.3%. Our overall debt service budget is roughly $5 million. And again, those costs are directly to support the bond work that is taking place. This slide is just representing high-impact budget items. I've already brought up many of them, or if not all of them. Again, debt service, $5 million. Our benefits are roughly $16 million. Special education department is $7.5 million. Sorry, Ms. Kelly Gorman. And transportation is roughly $5 million as well. So these are just large-ticket items that I wanted to point out to the board and the community, so you see where a large portion of the budget is going directly to. This next slide, I felt was important as we've been discussing long-term financial planning for the school districts. This is a snapshot of our reserve balance as of June 30th of last school year in the blue, and right now, the estimated balance for June 2020, June 22 of the current school year. So as you will see, in the two largest categories, there will be, we're estimating a reduction, and that's because the deficit spending that we have, we have the need to utilize our reserves. The EBOLAR Reserve, which is the first one on the left, represents employee benefits and accrued liability leave, and that's really used for sick time that staff members receive after they've been here for so many years. There are requirements within the bargaining agreements. But when a, I'll use a teacher as an example, when a teacher retires after being in Elwood for 25 years, they're entitled to a portion of their sick pay. So we have this reserve in place to help offset some of those costs. So this year, because we have so many individuals retiring, we're going to, we're estimating that we're going to use some of that money to offset those expenses that were unanticipated. The ERS reserve is also being reduced each year. For the past few years in our budget, we've designated $800,000 of the reserve towards the budget. And again, we're doing that this year. That's part of the 2.3 million. But our estimated reserve at the end of the year, we, in previous years, we've been able to appoint to somewhat refund that reserve or allocate monies back into, back into the reserve. But this year, we don't believe that we're going to be able to do that. So overall, if you take the total of all of our reserves, it's roughly $6.8 million. At, it was as of July 1st of this year. And the estimated balance at the close of this year is roughly $5.9 million. So our overall fund balance for the school district is reducing by roughly $900,000. So I just felt that was important to point out to the board. I know we've had discussions about long-term financial planning, and it's important to just... And it's important to just, I guess, I felt it was important to just reflect on this. As, you know, we talk about the tax cap and deficit spending. I just, it's important that the community and the board understand what type of effect it can have on the overall equity of the school district. As mentioned earlier, due to the fact that the proposed budget is below the tax levy cap, only a simple majority is required for it to pass. In the case that the budget, the proposed budget does not meet with our approval, the district has a couple of options. They can put up a revised budget, they can put up the same budget, or they can adopt a contingent budget. If we were to do, if we were to go to a contingent budget, we would have to reduce the spending plan by roughly $1.4 million. Some of the items that would be considered for reductions in the contingent budget would be staffing reductions across the board, potential reduction to our AP courses and high school electives, reductions to athletics and co-curricular activities, elimination of athletic and field trip transportation, elimination of nonessential equipment, and possibly elimination of some of our tuition-based programs that we utilize through BOSIs. And many of these items are not things the district necessarily would choose. But under New York State, there are certain items, especially equipment, that would have to be taken out of the budget as per New York State law. So, and again, if we were to go to a contingent budget, the administration and the board would come together and target exactly what reductions we would want to make. But hopefully, that is not the case. Just a reminder to the board and the community, the annual budget vote and election is on Tuesday, May 17th. Starts at 6:00 AM. The polls close at 9:00 PM in the middle school cafeteria. Questions or comments?
Thanks, Ms. Dunkel. Questions or comments from the Board of Education? You're welcome.
It's not on. I have a big mouse, so everybody can hear me regardless. I just have a couple of questions. And the first one, I love the color on this, okay. On the pilot, on the 2223 proposed revenue budget slide, I'm a little confused. If you can just clarify, so the pilot is payment in lieu of taxes, right?
Correct. Yeah, that's what pilot stands for.
That we give a tax break to because they come like, you know, the, you know, 24-hour fitness or something like that?
Right. So not to interrupt you, Mrs. Weiss, just to explain it. So the town of Huntington granted a pilot to Engel Berman, which is a real estate company, when the Bristol was built a few years ago. Or I don't know the exact year. No, it's not, it's not the seasons.
The Bristol is next to the 24-hour gym across from TJ Maxx.
So it's directly related to the Bristol. So at that, at that time, in payment in lieu of taxes for the school district, the town of Huntington came to an agreement with the school district and Engel Berman that the school district was to receive a portion of those monies since they had, they were given a tax break. So we are receiving those payments in lieu of receiving taxes from Engel Berman. So the pilot money, that's what that pilot represents. We're on a, believe, a 15-year schedule, and we'll continue to see, receive those pilot monies through December of 2026.
So the $47,000 is a positive for us?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So Lorraine, can you just explain further how it's basically, instead of the development paying full tax once they receive the COs, the town gives them a slow increase when we could be receiving the total amount, but this is the agreed-upon payment that we're getting?
Correct. Right. So the town, the town does not tax them at their full capacity, I guess, if you want to put it that way. And over time, their taxes are phased in. But the money or the revenue that the school district would have benefited from is paid to us in the form of this pilot. And it's, it follows the same schedule. So our payments are increasing little by little each year. And again, our last payment will be in the '26, '27 school year.
They can also keep reapplying for that, right? If they're, if they have an eight-year pilot, they can also, at the end of eight years, reapply for something where they continue to get tax breaks if they say, you know, the economy's bad or something like that.
Right. They could, and that would be between them and the town of Huntington.
Right. But we would, we wouldn't see their full tax benefit because they would be getting, they would be getting the tax benefit. You know what I'm saying?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. I had another question. When we look at the, we've talked about fixed, fixed components and fixed expenses, such as like transportation and healthcare and those things, and the administration portion of that, salaries and benefits. I remember it used to take like, if you look at the whole thing, like a certain percentage, and they're fixed, and we obviously can't control those. Retirement benefits, I mean, healthcare goes up 20%. We don't have the luxury of, you know, it's dictated to us, basically.
Right.
Now, so then you go into your, you talk about program expenses, and then you go into the expense budget breakdown. Is the program that, you know, is it fall under that other 3.9%? I'm trying to see where our program budget falls in under the expense budget breakdown.
So the, the program component, the 72%, when you, when you try to compare, I guess, the second, this particular graph to that, the program component is, there's a piece of the program component in each of these other categories except for debt service and transportation. But all of the salaries, benefits, special education costs, the other has to deal with some contractual items, materials, supplies, some of the smaller expenses. But each of these has a portion of the program component in it. Like I'll use salaries as an example. Within salaries, there are salaries for teaching staff who are directly in the school buildings. There are salaries for the administrative staff, and there are salaries for the buildings and grounds. Buildings and grounds falls under the capital component. The administration falls under the administrative component, but the teacher salaries fall under the program component. So each of these expenses has a piece of each of the three components within them. Like I said, except for debt service and transportation.
Okay. So it's, it's all, it's intertwined in there. I guess because in, obviously, program component is really the only thing that we have control over.
No, that's not, that's not correct. You, it's, you can't state it that way because, you said we have control over?
We have. Like we-
Not necessarily, because benefits are part of the program component. And we don't have control over benefits. That's what I'm saying. Each, each spending category has a piece of one of the components within it, or multiple pieces.
I guess in my, when I look at program component, I'm looking at the actual, like, program, like the classes, the, you know, athletic offerings, the music offerings, the, those kinds of things. So that's, in my mind, I have the classroom.
Right. No, and that, that is accurate. That is accurate, Mrs. Weiss. But when you're talking about like the classroom instruction, the teachers are part of that program. So their salaries and their benefits are part of the program component as well.
Okay. All right. I, I think that was...
Is that everything, Ms. Weiss?
I think so. I know I had a question about something that Ken was talking about, but I forgot. Should've wrote it down. Thank you, though. I mean, it was-
So thank you for presenting this tonight. This has a lot more information than some of the previous presentations. So I appreciate, I appreciate the high-impact budget items specifically because you can see from year to year, we're talking about, you know, almost a $600,000 increase on the debt service. And, you know, like Mr. Kern said, we have all these wonderful things. Again, the community voted on a bond. We have to pay the bond. So you go out and buy a car and take a loan on a car, you can't just not pay your loan. So, you know, these things, we feel them for years. We're continuing to do work, and we'll continue to feel them for years. But it's all part of good fiscal planning. We should not be debt spending any more than we already are. Benefits, it is what it is. It's almost a $600,000 year-over-year increase. I mean, that's, that's significant. So I'm very happy that you guys put together this budget. I would have liked to see a little more, you know, savings for long-term planning. But I, you know, we have to be sensitive to the taxpayers. And I hope we're just going to continue to be able to have like a fine balancing act going forward. But I'm sure we're going to be having difficult conversations going forward. But I think, you know, overall, you did a good job. I'm thrilled about the retention of the staff. We need additional buildings and grounds staff, you know. And most importantly, the teacher was non-negotiable. So I'm hoping everything stays in there as it is presented, but understanding that we don't have a final budget from our state. So everything's kind of up in the air. So fingers crossed, everything goes as we plan. And well done, and thank you for, you know, really explaining some of these huge impacts to the budget. So, and, and it's so true that everybody really does have a unique situation. You know, we live in a community that has no commercial tax revenue, like very insignificant commercial tax revenue. And that's a problem for us. And when we all purchased our homes, we moved in here knowing that. And it's just something that we have to bear with every year. It's frustrating, but that's Elwood. We're not Hot Hog.
Thank you. And I do, again, we're not, we're not immune to the struggles out in the community or in any community. You know, we all have our own struggles as far as inflation is concerned and the cost of living. You know, but the school district is also feeling the impact of COVID as well. You know, we're facing rising costs also. And again, I'm not minimizing the effect on the community, but it's, we do have to find that balance. And the budget we created, I feel, accomplishes that. So thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, Ms. Dunkel. I just had one question or one thing that I'm going to ask you to reiterate. I know I've asked you this before. Why, and for the community as well and for myself, why is it so important to maintain our reserves at a certain level? And how that, does that affect our future fiscal ratings and our borrowing capacity?
Excellent question. Thank you, Dr. Siddiqui. Maintaining the reserves first and foremost allows the school district to utilize them as well as our fund balance allocation. Again, in this year's budget, we have 2.3 million, $2.3 million that we're allocating from, both from reserves and fund balance allocation. If we don't maintain the levels of those, those reserves, we wouldn't have them to allocate. So if, if, if the ERS reserve did not exist in this year's budget, we wouldn't have that $800,000. So we would either have to cut $800,000 or ask the community for an additional $800,000. So that, again, there's a fine balance of where that lies and what, what, what we can utilize. Because it's not, it's not good practice to consistently deficit spend. But most schools districts, or I should say, many school districts are in that same boat because they're not flush with money. But as the reserves are spent down, that affects our overall, similar like credit rating. So when we go out for a credit rating, typically it has to be before a bond borrowing. Moody's, which is the company that does our credit rating, takes a look at our overall fiscal health. And part of that includes the balance in our reserves. Because if something, if we had an unanticipated cost come up, if, you know, say the roof fell down, and we had to replace it for $500,000, $600,000, and we didn't have a capital reserve or we didn't have money to support that, Moody's looks at that and says, okay, well, they don't really have any savings. So how are they going to cover that cost? Because they're committing, they're putting out a rating for us that the banks are now going to bid on in order to let us borrow money. So if we borrow money and then have this unanticipated cost, how are we going to make that bond payment? So it's, it's, it gives us, it's a, I guess, a comfort level, if you want to put it that way, that Moody's sees, you know, that we have reserves on hand to pay for unanticipated expenses. And when we receive a positive rating and the banks put their bid on when we go out to bond, they tend to give us or offer us lower interest rates because they know we have the stability to make those payments. And again, it's, Moody's is, it's our credit rating. So similar to in your personalized, when you go out, you know, if you wanted to buy a home, you need a mortgage, you need a car loan, anything like that. It's based on your credit rating. School districts are in the same boat. So having that financial stability long-term consistently helps us. So when we go out to bond, we receive a low interest rate, we're saving hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars over the cost of the bond.
Thank you. And our fiscal rating currently is-
Sorry. From Moody's, we have a AA2. And our designation from New York State was no designation, which is the highest designation you could receive.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I remembered my question.
There it is.
Dr. Basar, you had mentioned in your highlights, just in the budget highlights, about some, we're not through COVID yet, and there were some expenses like the ventilation and hygiene and, you know, the excessive cleaning. Was part of the grant money that we get, was, is that allocated to that? Or does that have to come out of our expense, are those additional expenses that wasn't under the? I think people always have a hard time understanding what exactly was under the privia of that grant.
Yeah, a combination of the two, Mrs. Weiss. We want to make sure there's flexibility within the operating budget for the expenses that came forward associated with COVID. Initially, you recall, we were making sure we were being able to purchase PPE, the cleaning equipment, things of that nature. We did include a large sum in the federal grant to try to address some of the more bigger ticket items. And we are still making certain that we identify them correctly before we expend the money. But one of the things that we're looking at very carefully are the ventilation systems within our classrooms. So we want to make sure that we have financing available to address those needs as they are most directly identified. There are some targeted areas of concern that we are evaluating very closely now. And we want to make sure we have the financial flexibility to address them to make sure our students are healthy and safe. Absolutely.
All right. I just want to thank you, yes, Ms. Dunkel. Appreciate the presentation and to your team for, you know, changing and taking care of everything and hearing the concerns of the Board of Education at the last meeting. I just want to bring some clarity. Dr. Basar touched upon it before, but I think it's an important point to bring back and highlight for the community, since the budget, the state budget has not been approved yet. So in that sense, I know we have a resolution further in the agenda to grant you the, or authorize you to amend and resubmit the property tax report card. Just want to clarify that when and if we do that, doesn't change the levy we adopt. It changes the spending plan of the district.
Correct. Yeah. Most, more importantly, it changes the, the revenue stream or the, the categories of the different revenue. If we were to see a reduction in state aid, let's just say for, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars. Again, we're not anticipating this. We would have no choice but to, you know, increase fund balance allocation or increase in allocation from our reserves, dipping in, again, to the, the savings of the district, if you want to call it that. But again, we do not anticipate a reduction in state aid. So the plan we put forward is the one we're expecting.
But to be crystal clear to the board and the community, and the point that I think Mr. Tommy was asking us to accentuate, if there is a change to the state aid, there will be no change to that 2.9% tax levy increase that we're proposing to the board and community. We will have to make adjustments to the funding sources within the budget and the potential of reductions to our proposal. We will not, and nor is the board authorizing the business official to make adjustments to that 2.9%.
Thank you, Dr. Basar. It's a little confusing. Unfortunately, we haven't been in this position in a long time where the state can't get their act together and put a budget before us, especially knowing that education is a huge part of that budget. So we are in this position, unfortunately, where we have to grant Ms. Dunkel the authorization to resubmit that report card on our behalf. But it is a little confusing, thinking if we do unfortunately get a reduction, which we won't, but in the case we did, it's, it's confusing as to whether we're going to raise the increase to the community or if we're going to alter and adjust the spending plan. or if we're going to alter and adjust the spending plan. So just wanted to accentuate that. That is the option which we will be doing. It's not going to be raising and passing that reduction on to the taxpayer.
No, not at all. The tax levy will not change from 2.9.
Thank you. And I'm also appreciative of the creativity in being able to hire the, yes, definitely the teacher and get the class sizes to where it is beneficial for the students, but also our buildings and grounds. The community adopted and approved a $34 million bond for our buildings and our grounds and our schools. And it is needed for that additional staff person to be out there and maintain and help to keep the district looking, you know, as good as it is for the money we spent on it. So, yeah, I appreciate the creativity. I know that wasn't easy, and I know that money could have been spent elsewhere. So thank you for finding and making things work to add that into the budget.
You're welcome.
I don't see any other questions. So we thank you, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're good. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Dunkle. And thank you to the Board of Education for giving the administration clear guidance in how to develop this budget. Assuming we vote to adopt it this evening, it will become the task of Ms. Dunkle and I to make sure we're conveying the information clearly and articulately to the community so that they will vote to support our spending plan and our budget. So thank you for your strong endorsement. We have a second presentation on the agenda this evening. Two years ago, Ms. Eileen Kelly Gorman took on the reins of our Executive Director of Special Education and People Personnel Services, replacing Mrs. Wilkinson, who retired at that time. Since that time, Mrs. Kelly Gorman has been working diligently to monitor the programs and services made available to our students with disabilities and our general population. She has done an exemplary job in evaluating the needs of the program and finding priorities, priority areas to address within her purview. And I asked her to put together an update for the board and the community this evening of the different initiatives taking place under her umbrella of special education and the programs that she helps to oversee. It's wonderful work. I asked her to truncate her presentation a bit in the, in the interest of time. But these are the highlights of the many things being accomplished within this area. Mrs. Kelly Gorman?
Good evening. Thank you to the board and the administration and the community for inviting me to speak tonight about some of the work that has been going on in my office and the initiatives in the Special Education Department in Elwood. Hopefully, Dr. Bossert didn't steal all of my thunder before I got up here tonight, so. When I entered this role two years ago, I quickly realized that we would need some kind of principles to help guide the work that we were going to be doing in our office to keep us focused and to help us meet with success. So the blueprint for improved results for students with disabilities, I found it, and it's put out by the New York State Education Department. And it kind of provided a framework or scaffolding that I was looking for to help ground the work we were going to do. So the blueprint, it was developed by New York State in consultation with stakeholders. It's aligned to the mission of the New York State Education Department, Office of Special Education. And it seeks to ensure that students with disabilities have the opportunity to benefit from high-quality instruction, reach the same standards as all students, and to leave school prepared to be successful in life, prepared to transition to post-school learning, living, and employment. So when I came across this, I just felt that if we were to follow this blueprint, that, you know, we could ensure that we would have high-quality instruction standards and therefore success for our students. This is just like a little blurb of some of the things that, when I arrived in the office, even though it was COVID, we were able to start to look at, to look at some of our needs and how we could align all of the work that we were going to do to these principles. When I arrived in this role, I did have the benefit of knowing many of the stakeholders in the district. I've been here for a number of years now. But I had not been in the Special Education Department for a while. And so I came in seeking a fresh vision of the needs within the department. Some things had changed since I had last been in there. And so I wanted to really take an overhead look at where we were. The Special Education Department is unique because we partner with families beginning when their children are three years old and all the way up through when children are 21 years old. So we're a little bit different than everyone else in the district. It's important to us that parents and our families feel comfortable coming to our department with their concerns, with needs for their students, so that we can partner together to make sure that students get the best education possible while they're here with us. So this slide, it highlights not just the work that we've been doing over the past two years in terms of listening to feedback from district stakeholders and making adjustments to our programs and our procedures. But it also kind of speaks to how intertwined our work is in the Special Education Office with each of the buildings and the other offices in the district. Like it or not, our office communicates daily with each of the four buildings. We communicate with the business office, transportation, human resources, technology, curriculum. So it's important to us that we have clear responsibilities and that the lines of communication are always open with our department and everyone else so that we know that we can successfully run our meetings, we can transport our students to school, we are correctly staffing our classrooms. And the success of our students really relies on that constant communication and collaboration with everyone else. And so we really have tried to invest time in building those relationships. I have to thank my staff in particular because they have embraced some of these changes and my thousands of different spreadsheets with many tabs that they've learned to look through. And they really have taken on a lot of this to keep abreast of everything that goes on in our office and to make sure that we're meeting our responsibilities and deadlines. So just going back to this, I just can't state enough how much we rely on these relationships to articulate the goals of the department, K to 12. And also, we've really tried to focus on building to building. What are the changes that happen for students, both in terms of curriculum, social, emotional needs? So that when we're writing, you know, IEPs, Individualized Education Plans, that when a student moves from fifth grade to sixth grade, say, that that document reflects what they're going to need the following year. And so we've really tried to invest time to allow for, say, our, just, I think it was last week, it might have been two weeks ago, our building psychologist and social worker from Boyd went down to Harley. They got to spend some time with our second graders, our second grade teachers, and get to know the students a little bit so that there are familiar faces when the kids get over there later on. And so we really are trying to, again, build that communication. Our initiatives are largely focused around this feedback from parents, teachers, staff members, and then, of course, research-based best practices. So this is just a snapshot of those seven guiding principles on the blueprint. And as I go through the presentation tonight, we will highlight each of those. It's not intended to be read in that tiny font. But overall, I would say there's a focus on inclusivity, opportunity, students having a voice, and on high-quality instruction. There is a lot of jargon. I already caught myself saying IEP without defining what it was. So that technical vocabulary, I thought warranted a moment before I dive in to kind of talk about some of what those terms might be that you might hear throughout my presentation. Least restrictive environment, even though it sounds like a physical place, in fact, it can be more than just a location. It's a concept or a principle. The idea of a least restrictive environment, it guides our decision-making process in determining how and where children will learn best in order to achieve. So it takes into account intellectual, behavioral, and emotional needs of our children when we're deciding what program to place our students in for the following year. And I should also note that this is done not just by staff within the district, but parents are always at those meetings where those decisions are being made. They have a voice. And as our students get older, particularly starting in about eighth grade, we invite and encourage our students to participate in those meetings so that they also have a voice in, in planning for their future and what their needs are. So the slide details what's known as the continuum of services in Elwood. The lowest tier represents the least restrictive environment. And the services here are delivered with very little, if any, time away from a general education classroom. So those are things like speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy. Some students may receive counseling, vision services. If a student has maybe cochlear implants, they may need some consultation services with a teacher for the deaf. But they really don't involve instruction outside of a general education curriculum if students are solely receiving related services. As you move up the chart, the amount of time students are educated in a more specialized or restrictive setting increases. So a resource room would be a small group of students working on their IEP goals with a special education teacher one time, one time a day for 40 minutes. Integrated co-teaching is that inclusion model where you would see two teachers collaborating together. It allows students to be educated alongside their grade-level peers, even if they may not be quite two grade-level academics. The teachers are able to work together to scaffold learning so that they can learn in that classroom. Self-contained is a much smaller group. There's a teaching assistant in the room. And we really break down the curriculum there and highlight for students really just those most important concepts. And sometimes, you know, take it down even a little bit below the grade level so that we can meet their needs there. Life skills is functional-based instruction. And I'm going to spend a little more time on that later in the presentation. And then there's BOCs or OOD, which is out-of-district placement, and then residential. So again, it moves up. And related services is sort of a special area because there are many students that receive related services who are in one of these other programs. But it's at the bottom because we also have students who only receive related services, and that would be the least restrictive. So our goal is always for students to receive their education alongside their peers to the maximum extent possible. And placing students in the least restrictive environment fosters independence, and it increases their time with their peers. I know that at the last Board of Education meeting, Dr. Bossert presented a similar slide. And so I just wanted to go back to it for a moment. This year, we have had a number of students enroll in the district with IEPs. And a few of these students would be considered high-need students, so students who maybe need one-to-one assistance in the classroom, students who maybe receive many related services as well as a program. And our staff has really embraced these students. They've worked hard to help them assimilate in Elwood, and we've been able to find placements for them within our existing structure. It also speaks to how our goal is always to try to reduce the number of students in out-of-district placements such as a BOCs. So you can see that even though the number of students who are classified in the district has increased, the number of out-of-district placements has decreased. And we work really hard to expand program offerings so that we can keep our Elwood students within our district programs. And as a matter of fact, since the summer, we did have several students who came to our district from other districts where, or I should say moved to, not came to, our district from other districts where they were receiving an education outside of their district's placements. So in a place like a BOCs. And each time, we brought our staff in, which included always a special education teacher and a school psychologist. We met with the family, we met with the children, we reviewed their IEP, we reviewed any other documentation that the students brought from their other districts. And each time, our staff said, we think that we have everything we need to educate these students in our district. And so far, our students, we've been able to bring them in, and they've done exceptionally well. And so I'm really proud of that. I'm proud of, you know, how our staff has embraced that, and I'm proud that the students have had that opportunity because, you know, it lets them be educated with peers, it lets them join clubs, attend after-school activities, and really be immersed in the Elwood community. And I know that we will always have some students with needs, particularly those that may be medical in nature, that we can't meet within the district. But we do continue to work towards creating as many opportunities for our students here in our buildings as possible. So one of the principles is, I titled it professional development, but it's specially designed research-based instruction to provide students with disabilities access to the general education curriculum. And so a quality instructional program gives students access to the general education curriculum, begins with providing opportunities for professional development for our staff. Each day, our teachers provide research-based instructional teaching and learning strategies and supports for students with disabilities as well as those who are not classified in our classrooms in Elwood. And our teachers assess the effectiveness of all of these programs. And they give us feedback, and we value that feedback. So we use a combination of in-house specialists and staff developers when we provide professional development for our staff. So for example, there are a few bullets up there that speak to behavioral trainings that we've done. Three of our school psychologists are also trained behaviorists. And so when we look to do some of this professional development, we tap our in-house experts on the shoulder. And they're able to turnkey trainings for us to teach staff about the basics of behavior management, how to collect data. And, you know, the benefit to that is that they also know our staff and they know our students. And so the information that they're sharing is things that people can return to their classrooms and use right away. We spent many years promoting the idea of inclusion. And this year, in conversation with Dr. Moran, we sort of realized that sometimes we place students in classes in their special areas like art, music, library, without really giving the teachers a lot of support on what inclusion means. And so we worked with a trainer to provide and develop some professional development for our staff members so that they can better understand the needs of the students that are in their room, how to integrate those students, and then how to modify work within those classes so that they can meet with success as well. Additionally, we've done work with co-teaching partners in grades three through eight where they receive professional development to learn best practices for delivering instruction. One thing we're grateful to our teachers for is that they open their doors to coaching. So we send in an expert in integrated co-teaching, and they observe a lesson. And then the teachers meet with that professional developer afterwards to receive feedback on how to improve their practice. It's really targeted, and it really benefits everyone involved. But, you know, it does, it does take a little bit of humbling to get that feedback, too. So we really appreciate how receptive everyone has been to that. And this year, we've done some work on transition in the IEP, which I will speak to a little bit more later. But basically, our high school special education teachers and counselors have been trained through the Long Island Regional Partnership on how to really look at post-secondary goals for our students about employment, schooling, independent living, and how to document that appropriately in an IEP. Building interventions prior to a special education referral. So one of the items in the blueprint is that schools provide multi-tiered systems of behavioral and academic support. These are the things that we want to look at, and these are the ways that my department really supports the buildings, even students who aren't classified yet. And it's always our goal to try a multitude of strategies for students to see if, you know, we tweak how we're providing their instruction a little bit and if that helps them to learn and that they don't actually have a disability prior to referring them to the Committee on Special Education to have them evaluated, to see if there is a disability. So through collaboration with each of the buildings as well as the curriculum department, we've increased our early interventions for the general education population. So we look closely at data, we listen to our teachers, we listen to our families. And through this process, we've introduced several new evidence-based practices, particularly in grades K to five, to help students who are struggling academically to develop their reading, math, and speech skills. So by strengthening our interventions, we can hopefully reduce the number of referrals to special education. And for those students who continue to not make progress, it gives us data to show where they're struggling so that when we do ultimately refer them for special education, we have more information about what their needs are and where to correctly place them. more information about what their needs are and where to correctly place them and what services they may need. A large part of the focus when we do refer students for evaluation in special education is to look at what took place prior to a child being referred, to make sure that we've tried a variety of strategies to see if we can help them learn prior to referring them to special education. So we really always want to take a look at that. This past summer, we trained additional reading teachers and special education teachers on Foundations of Wilson for grades three through eight. Wilson is an intensive reading program based on phonological coding. It's what would be considered like a tier three. It really works with students on a daily basis to help them develop their reading skills. Another teacher volunteered to be trained in Orton-Gillingham strategies. So this year, she took what she learned, and she's implemented sensory-based strategies with her students, so things like tracing letters in sand, to help them develop their skills. Several of our other teachers have learned the recipe for reading and the Hegarty programs, which are also more phonics-based programs. And so we've really been trying those largely at Harley, but some at Boyd also, and we've seen a lot of growth with our students in those areas. So I'm really happy about that. The Expanding Expression Tool was actually brought forth after our conference day. Our speech teachers were collaborating, and this is a tool that can be implemented on a whole class level to help students develop their speech skills, using descriptive language, their writing skills. And so we are trialing that with a first grade class right now. With the support of the board, we were able to increase the number of mental health providers in the district. I know that was mentioned by Dr. Bossert earlier. These practitioners have been able to provide students with more counseling services to help them in the classroom to be successful learners. SEPTA this year generally helped to sponsor the creation of a counseling center at the middle school. And so that's in a space now where students are able to go to meet as a group with a, with a counselor. It's also used for parent meetings, and it can also be used just as a space for students to go. I walked by the other day, there were a couple of students in there doing a yoga video. So it's a nice space for them to relax for a moment. The transition, nine and ten courses were created at the high school to support our at-risk students. Initially, Mr. Cole and I met with the guidance counselors following first quarter of last year, and we looked at students who were failing multiple subjects. We were able to, I believe it was in February, place them in a first period class where they were able to receive some support from a special education teacher in the morning. But we also were able to have our counselors visit that space and make sure that the students were really ready to learn. So we worked on not only their academic skills, but their executive functioning skills and their social-emotional learning. This year, based on the success of that program, we were able to expand that program to also service some of our 10th grade students. And these are just some of our short-term grant-funded initiatives, largely spearheaded by Dr. Hull's office, the Office of Curriculum. But we do collaborate with the buildings and with my office on many of these. So we have things like student homework clubs in grades K to five, before and after-school literature circles. The wellness program is spearheaded by Mr. Shanahan and the athletics department, but it is like a 10-week cycle where we have a physical education teacher and a health, or health teacher, I guess he's certified in, visiting our elementary classrooms to do some wellness work with students. Our Summer Boost Program is another academic intervention service for our students to prevent that, what we, what's known as summer slide. And it provides them with opportunities to practice their reading and math skills for a few weeks over the summer to keep them on track moving into September. We were able to fund some summer, summer school courses for our high school students through the Western Suffolk BOSEs program. Math and ENL-AIS support, the High School Intensive Interventions Program, which allows students who maybe were failing a course to do some work with teachers, to do almost credit recovery type work, where they're able to then pass their classes for the year, hopefully, and move forward with their cohort. Was mentioned before, the textbook adoption, and there will be supports for remediation and our English language learners in that. So those are all things that have been funded through the grants. They're short-term initiatives, we call them, but some of them will certainly have long-lasting We've been able to expand our program offerings. Schools provide high-quality inclusive programs and activities. So by increasing what we offer in the district, we're able to bring more students back and therefore reduce our out-of-district placements. We've expanded our integrated co-teaching programs to meet the needs of students. In the middle school in particular, we have fewer students enrolled in our self-contained classes, and that has allowed us to then expand our ICT offerings at the middle school. We have also seen an increase this spring in the number of students who are being recommended to move from that integrated co-teaching program to a resource room, which would be a less restrictive environment. So we're, you know, very excited about that. We're proud of it because we think that, you know, we're giving students an opportunity to learn and grow and be independent, and they are reaching, they're achieving higher based on that. Next year, we are also looking to add resource rooms to grades one and two without a staffing impact, if there are students who would benefit from that level of programming. One of the tenants is enhanced post-secondary preparation. So we have increased our opportunities for students to work at various job site locations to learn skills and to explore careers. You could see some of our, our friends on the side here. We send two vans out during the day. They go with an Elwood staff member and with a job coach. And we are very lucky that some of the local businesses have welcomed our students into their workplace. Our younger students in the high school go out for two periods a day. Our older students will go up, out for three periods a day to have a more immersive experience in a workplace. We've increased, we've created, I should say, weekly visits to the ability center. Part of that came out of last year when we were unable to visit work, job sites because of COVID. We did begin sending students to the ability center. And what that is, is it's at the Viscardy Center. I don't know if you're familiar with that school. But students are able to practice their daily living skills. There's a model home on-site, so they're able to really practice like what it would be like to live independently. There's also a mock retail store, there's mock offices, so they're able to go in and have all different job experiences in this school setting though. So we go every Friday, and they cycle through different experiences throughout the year. We were also able to add a high school guidance counselor several years ago, who is dedicated to working with our students with disabilities and our English language learners. And so she's really able to target opportunities for our students, post-secondary in particular, to help them be prepared to live independently and successfully. We've done a lot of work around transition planning and goals in the IEP this year. Our high school special education teachers, I mentioned before, they've been trained by the Long Island Regional Partnership, and so we really are looking at how we identify students' post-secondary goals through different surveys and help them to understand different career options that are available for them. We are always working towards developing student voices and expanding the knowledge of post-secondary opportunities. We do different surveys through Naviance. We also bring in BOSEs, and they are able to give like a vocational assessment for our students so that they're able to see what their skill sets might be good at in any of the technical programs offered through Western Suffolk BOSEs. And, you know, nothing's fun without pictures. So these are some of our students out in the community. They go to sites such as Old Navy, Panera, Five Below, Outback, Barnes &amp; Noble, Applebee's. They have uniforms for Applebee's that they have to keep in order in their classroom, and they know that they have to take it with them when they go to their job sites in the morning. So they really do get a wealth of different opportunities to learn and to see what they might be interested in doing when they're finished at John Glenn. Increased communication with parents. So parents and other family members are engaged as meaningful partners in the special education process and the education of their child. We have worked hard over the past two years to update and expand our website. So I go in periodically and I update different courses that are available, or workshops, I guess I would call it, for parents on things like transitioning out of high school, on topics like transitioning from CPSE, which is preschool special education, to CPSE, which is school-aged special education. And so these are all run by the Long Island Regional Partnership. They're free of cost. Right now, they're all virtual. And so we try to update that so the parents are aware that there are some of these things out there to help inform them. We also have on the site a transitions component that lists things from driver's ed programs for students with disabilities to scholarships that might be available. Some Access VR is a service that students can access to help them fund post-secondary schooling. So all of that information is available on our website. Mrs. Kreutz, who is our secondary chairperson, she also is a social worker by, by training. She spent a lot of time, particularly during COVID, developing a site with mental health resources, and so that's all linked on our website now too. So we try to keep that updated, and we try to keep a lot of information for our parents on their forms that they may need to complete, anything like that. I have tried to communicate more frequently from our department to parents at least twice a year. I also work with Ms. Dober, who is a high school guidance counselor, to use Naviance to send out communications to our high school parents. She's able to do that really quickly with me, and so we're able to share things like scholarship opportunities for our classified students through that outlet. Our middle and high school parent orientation sessions, we've added for students with disabilities transitioning to a new building where parents are able to have some familiar faces, but we're also able to really speak about instructional and social-emotional programming, answer questions that might be more specific to our students with disabilities as they're moving from one building to the next. SEPTA has been great. Sometimes I see something for parents, I'm able to, they do a weekly blast, so I can share it with them, and they'll include it in their weekly blast. They've been really supportive with that. They also always support different funding. They'll give, you know, I know they're providing some funds right now for materials for our sensory rooms at Harley and Boyd, so they've been a great partner. We have established a plan for regularly reviewing our 504 plans. We do send letters out annually to parents and teachers asking for feedback, but we felt that particularly after students transition from one building to the next, especially making that elementary to secondary jump, that it warranted a sit-down meeting with the students involved so we can really look at, are we still meeting their needs? So we have been working on that this year. And then, of course, my Twitter account, which I am trying to be better about recently, is @EKellyGorman. We've increased our extracurricular opportunities for our students to promote inclusivity. We have increased access to Naviance, so our students beginning in middle school have access to this. They're able to complete interest inventories. We were able to create a unified basketball this team, as Dr. mentioned, Dr. Bossert mentioned before. We're really excited about that. The Special Olympics Unified Sports is an inclusive program. It's sponsored through Section 11. Mr. Shanahan was great in partnering with me and investigating what we would need and how we would go about setting it up. The students have practices, they've already started several days a week. They will have six games, three home games and three away games. I'll do a shameless plug at the end. We were so lucky. Our boys varsity basketball coach also happens to have a certification in special education. And so when Mr. Rogner heard that we were looking to pilot this program, he came to us immediately, asking, not only could he be involved, but sharing some of his ideas for moving it forward. And so we felt very lucky to have him on staff and to have the interest there to run it. And you can see some of the members of our team in that top picture. The program will hopefully help build confidence in important social skills while also giving students with intellectual disabilities a chance to create new friendships. Then we, I listed a few of the clubs that we've created, particularly at the high school recently, a friendship club, a chess club, a gaming club. And again, we're just looking to increase social opportunities for our students with disabilities, allow them to interact with their peers, and to really be immersed in that high school John Glenn experience. And so that bottom picture is some of our members of the friendship club, which Mr. Kilkeny runs. So moving forward, I mentioned before, we are looking to, if we have students with a need, introduce resource room at Harley. I am looking to do a kindergarten parent orientation for students who are transitioning from preschool to school-age services. Mrs. Milan and I have been discussing that, and Ms. Ko, who is the psychologist at Harley Avenue. We're always looking to streamline what we do in our office to make sure that we're scheduling meetings, that we are aware of what's going on in the building so that, you know, we can be sensitive to the needs of teachers and not pull them out during, you know, key times in the school year. Continuing to partner with the building and district leaders so that we're included in the planning. We look at the data with them, we look at the master scheduling with them, we try to have a voice in program offerings that our students have the most opportunities possible. And then, of course, there's always the state reports that just seem to come up all the time. But we are always cognizant of that and trying to really look ahead at what things we'll be reporting on and how to make sure that Elwood is always reported in a favorable way. All right, so here's my shameless plug slide. SEPTA is currently selling T-shirts and long-sleeved T-shirts. They're lovely. That's the email, or they will be at the Elwood Health and Wellness Community Day, second shameless plug, on Thursday, April 28th. But I will say that the T-shirt was designed by one of our own sixth graders, and we're so proud of him. I love the theme behind it, and so that's there. And then our first unified basketball home game is Thursday, May 19th at 4:30 in the John Glenn Gym. Mr. Shanahan and Ms. Fenero have been great. The cheerleaders are going to come. We're hoping to make it a community event for our students. So I think that's it. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Thank you so much for your presentation. This is my first time hearing from you since I've been on the board, I know due to COVID, so thank you so much for being here. I think it's wonderful that you trained the special area teachers. Being a former special area teacher, sometimes it was hard because we didn't know exactly what tools, and I'm thankful that you're giving those tools to those teachers. I'm a big fan of Naviance. Bringing it down to the middle school level is amazing. And also, my former school district did the basketball, and it's, as I've said before, one of the most amazing things. I encourage everybody to come out. It's one of the most uplifting things I've ever witnessed, and I will definitely be there with my children. Just a couple of quick questions. How are we closing the gaps with our ELL learners? What strategies? I know you have AIS. Is there anything else that we supply for our ELL students? And is there any data to say that we are closing the gap?
So that is more so Mrs. Vine and Dr. Hull's areas, but we do certainly look at some of their needs, and we are trying to provide strategies for them. We're looking at, you know, how we can push our ENL teachers into their classrooms without disrupting their learning process during the school day. So we're looking to group them by their needs a little bit better, maybe students that have less of a language ability, to keep them in a smaller group so that we can really target them, whereas the students that have more language can maybe be in a bigger group. So that's one thing that I know Mrs. Milan and I have been looking at.
Yeah, as Ms. Kelly Gorman said, the purview of supervising our ELL program really falls under the guidelines of Mrs. Vine and Dr. Hull. But I assure you, Mr. Sroll, we're taking very close inventory of the progress of our, our English language learners. It's one of the primary areas of focus when we're reviewing both our program and our staffing. Dr. Hull can elaborate at a future meeting about some of the grant-funded initiatives that are directly targeting the needs of our ELL students and trying to close the achievement gap between our English language learners and our native speakers. You'll note that in the grant, we are funding an additional teaching position in that area part-time to further meet the needs of the, of the students. part-time to further meet the needs of the students. As I noted in my slide last week, that is the fastest-growing area of our population. It is a rapidly increasing portion of our staffing, but we are fortunate to have some very, very talented instructors working with our students and we are amazed every day at the progress that they make.
Great. Also, another quick question. With regard to graduation, when our special education population concludes their education, are they graduating with Regents diplomas? Are they, do we offer a CEDAS diploma? Do we offer any work-based learning credit for our special education students?
So our mission and, you know, our main goal is always a Regents diploma for our students. And most of our students do leave high school with that. We do have students that then, you know, attend tech and are able to earn that CEDAS credential. And then we have other students that are in our life skills classes that, of course, meet their learning objectives through the New York State Alternate Assessment and, you know, are not eligible for a Regents diploma in that sense. But that's why we, you know, send them to the work-based learning so that they are prepared to have success and to work independently when they leave us. But our goal is always, again, to try to get students to that Regents diploma.
Right. And I think it's awesome that they do the work-based learning. Do you know if the students are getting the 54 hours that's required to get credit for the work-based learning that gets reported to the state?
Those students, it's not that same level of programming for them.
Any other questions from the board? Question to Ms. Weiss?
Thank you. I mean, this was really inspiring and very informational. When you, you discussed professional development, and I think one of the questions I had was, is there any sort of professional development for the gen ed population teachers to look for signs that a student would require some sort of special ed? And, you know, I could use, you know, like maybe a, you know, speech or if they have an issue that's maybe not so obvious.
So I think that more so than professional development, we do have ISTs in each building. So it's a team that comes together. It's the principal, it's the AIS provider, so the reading AIS teacher, the math AIS teacher, the building psychologist, social worker. And then teachers are able to, I guess you would call it, like present students to the team. So they come in and they'll say, you know, I'm noticing this with, with Eileen. And can you help me and support me? And so based on what the teacher shares with the team, then the experts there, and sometimes they will call in, say, a speech teacher, or maybe if it is an ENL learner, they'll bring in that teacher. And so they're able to collaborate. And then they do, we track it in our student management system in eSchool. And so the following month, they're able to put some strategies in place for the student and then they're able to revisit and look at the data and see if it's made progress or not. And then based on that, they're able to try other things. Frequently, those conversations lead to increasing maybe AIS visits with the reading teacher. Or maybe the speech teacher will come into a classroom and observe the student and provide the teacher with feedback. So it's more individualized when we're talking about specific students, but we do have that process in place.
So, okay, forgive my naivety in this, but like, and this might be part of basic when you're going for a teacher, you know, you learn this, but what about just being able to know what to look for that might indicate that a student would need services? Is that just part of the normal teaching?
Yeah, I think teachers are really perceptive with that. I think, you know, certainly over time, we all develop that skill set a little bit more, but when you're looking at 20 students and, you know, 18 of them are doing one thing and you happen to notice that this one student continues to not be able to maybe decode the same letters when they're reading aloud to you, because our teachers will read with our students. So maybe as you start to see that that child continues to struggle with certain letters or sounds, then that's something that becomes on your radar and you start paying attention to it a little bit more. And, you know, you try your strategies that you know and then you bring it to the team at the building level. So I think sometimes it's more just looking at your class and then realizing when students individually are struggling with certain concepts.
And with, you know, for the past couple of years, we, obviously with the COVID and the younger kids especially wearing the masks, have we implemented any, like, other speech identification tactics to kind of look at, you know, how do we identify? I mean, obviously, we're not looking at them speaking, so...
Yeah, actually, interestingly enough, a lot of the speech that we do in school is not necessarily on articulation. That's something that, you know, is done in preschool, but when students reach school age, it's more so they're seen by a speech therapist on the outside. We don't run a lot of articulation for our students in the building, but it is something that, you know, we can look for. And then, of course, now, you know, with our masks, we do have some, our one speech teacher is Prop certified, which definitely involves like the movement of your mouth informing the letters. And so we weren't able to offer that when we were masked and in the height of COVID, but as things got better, we were able to put things in place. We do have the mask with the clear opening for them, or we would put like the clear panel in between so that we could do some of that work. So it did change how we were doing some of our practices. But again, a lot of our speech work has to do with like comprehension and understanding also.
And so, because there's always a lot of talk and data about, you know, how the mask affected speech and the younger kids and the cognitiveness. Have you noticed that, an increase in that, as opposed?
I haven't necessarily noticed an increase in referrals based on that, no.
Okay, thank you. One more question, and I'm very excited. You did the shameless plug at the end, but about the unified basketball and then at the high school, I didn't realize it was just at the high school, and it's a pilot program. Do you see it expanding to the younger grades, like the middle school and maybe Boyd?
So we've talked about, it is a Section 11-sponsored event, and I don't believe that there actually is a middle school level equivalent for it. So it runs fully through the athletic department. So we're, we can't just completely run it that way. But I have spoken with Dr. Moran about possibly doing something similar as like an intramural activity so that students begin to have that experience, but they wouldn't necessarily be traveling to other schools when they're younger. And then when they're in high school, you know, it opens up and makes it even more special, I guess, for them.
I have to give a shameless plug, too. Mr. Shannon and I are already engaging in some conversations, as I mentioned, about bringing a unified team to fall sports as well. I cannot confirm nor deny that we are pursuing a unified bowling team for the fall. We'll see how things go.
Very nice. I'm very excited for the May 19th game. Thank you.
Thanks.
So I have no questions. Your presentation was extremely thorough. Your presence in the special education department is, has been unbelievable. The work that has come out of there, the communication, the programs, I can go on and on. It's just beautiful work that's been coming out there. So thank you and your staff for all that you have done to really move that department And I'm loving everything I'm seeing. I love the unified basketball. My son is participating in that and he's been mentoring and training some of the student athletes. And it's just as valuable for him as it is for the other students. And the experience has been amazing for all parties involved. And I'm so excited here that we may be expanding it because I think that we really do need more inclusivity options available to us where we put the entire student body together at all times. And they may not necessarily be together without programs like this. So it's a teaching moment for everybody and it has been a blessing.
I appreciate that. And, you know, I think it also is an opportunity for our students that maybe aren't the best basketball players, but that they can still join and play and, and coach with other students too. So provides our gen ed students with an additional opportunity also.
Yeah, I also wanted to echo Mrs. Mammalito that your presentation was amazing. Thank you for doing it. It was very thorough. And I also, I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to applaud you and the comment that you made or in the beginning when you said that your department takes care of from three to 21, that's absolutely amazing. And I really applaud your ability to keep your doors open for parents because it can be very, very overwhelming as a parent of a, you know, young child starting in that journey to have people that they can speak to along the way. So thank you so much.
Thanks. Our mental health staff and our special educators at our buildings and the chairpeople also, you know, they do a great job in responding to parent concerns as soon as they can.
So I'm really fortunate. I get to know Ms. Eileen Kelly Gorman when she was just Ms. Eileen Kelly, when she was in the high school, working alongside our special education students. And to see her grow into the role and continue to be somebody who is connected to the students, even though she's in a higher role now. I have been out in the community numerous times where community members have come up to us and said, I can't thank you enough for having somebody who listens to us in the special education department. I can't thank you enough for the work that's going on in the special education department. I've been a part of a CSC and I was heard. Those aren't things you necessarily hear in special education. It's usually, we're denied services. I hate the director. I can't stand that I'm not being heard. And it's quite the contrary. It is a wonderful service that you know how to couple together with your background. So it's wonderful to watch you flourish in the role. It's also wonderful to see the students. There's nothing better than going to Costco and seeing a former John Glenn student come up and say hello. And you see them out there actively engaging in the workforce. That's huge. Home Depot, we have a lot of students that have graduated John Glenn who have benefited from the opportunities here that are now working within our community. So it's a wonderful program. Echoing all the sentiments of everybody else, I mean, the basketball, other things that are coming out of your department, it's amazing. We're just, we're happy for our students. And unfortunately, sometimes the special education students are the ones who get pushed to the side. They don't, they don't get the limelight that they deserve. And we're starting to see more and more of that from yourself, knowing, being an educator in that role, you're really bringing them forward and they deserve every bit of it. So I thank you, I commend you, I thank your staff, our special educators when COVID took place and we shut down. I mean, I was an ABA aide. How do you sit on the back of a computer and look at a student and be able to provide services? It was impossible. But Elwood's teachers, Elwood's special education teachers were creative. They figured out ways to connect to the families, connect to the students and continue to grow and keep them on the trajectory that they deserve. So hats off to the special education department. Sorry it took so long through COVID to get you up here and give you the recognition, the opportunity for you to have the platform to share a really extensive and elaborate presentation. So we thank you and, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly Gorman. We really appreciate all of your hard work that is really bearing results within our department and for our students with disabilities. And, you know, as the board has correctly pointed out, the impact that your leadership is having on our program in its entirety is nothing short of outstanding. So we thank you very much for your hard work and we look forward to continued positive Mr. Tomio, at this early hour of 10:05, I believe that concludes the presentations for this evening. Fortunately, I'm a Yankee fan because I think the Met game is probably over by now.
Hopefully, they're winning for the Met fans. Let's see.
Donations.
Thank you. I'm a little blurred myself here. All right. Up to board recognition of donations. Ms. Weiss, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Tomio. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby accepts the following donations with gratitude. $2,000 from the Elwood Middle School PTA to support the purchase of a new scoreboard for the football field. $3,000 from the John Glenn Football Alumni Association to also support the purchase of a new scoreboard for the football field. And $500 from the Elwood SEPTA to support the purchase of uniforms and other expenses for the unified basketball program, which I will plug one more time. There will be game on May 19th, and that is going to be where, Mrs. Gorman, in the, in the high school. Okay. And for those that aren't aware, our scoreboard on the football field is not functioning and we are in dire need of a new scoreboard. So we appreciate the fact that our community has come out to help us fund for this so that we can have something when the fall football season begins. So thank you. It definitely, I'll use the expression, does take a village. And we appreciate every person that has worked toward with this goal.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Weiss. The recommended action was said by Ms. Weiss. So with that being said, may I have a motion to approve the donations on the agenda? Mr. Skrola, seconded by Mrs. Weiss, all in favor, 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Weiss. That brings us up to our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion, Mrs. Weiss, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui, all in favor, 5-0. And we do have something to highlight within our consent agenda. We have two action items that were listed within there and we're going to take them separately to vote. Recommended action number one, and I would be remiss if I did not say that this is a very important moment in the budget development process. The budget has been presented to the Board of Education and this evening's draft is from the superintendent for the board's consideration. When the adopted budget takes place this evening by, or anticipatedly takes place by, the Board of Education, we will be placing it before the community for a vote on May 17th. With that said, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby adopts the expenditure appropriation of $69,181,071, the budget, to operate the schools for the 2022-2023 fiscal year and present such a budget appropriation to the district residents for a vote on May 17th, 2022. I have a motion. Motion, Dr. Siddiqui, seconded by Mrs. Mammalito. All in favor? 5-0. Second recommended action. May I have a motion for the following? Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the 2022-2023 property tax report card as presented to the Board of Education at this meeting. And be it further resolved that the Assistant Superintendent for Business is directed to submit the property tax report card to the State Education Department by the end of the next business day following this approval. And be it further resolved that the Assistant Superintendent for Business is authorized to amend and subsequently resubmit the property tax report card to the State Education Department at a later date if our state aid changes as a result to the final adoption of the New York State budget. I have a motion. Motion, Mrs. Mammalito, seconded by Mr. Skrola, all in favor, 5-0. The next meeting will be our budget hearing on, I believe, May 11th, 10th, 10th, excuse me, May 10th, day off. So that is where we will host our next meeting for our budget, which will be the hearing. And that brings us up to, there is no items on the agenda, our second residence remarks. Do we have any residents wishing to speak at this residence remarks? Okay, thank you, Ms. Torres. So I will redo my blurb. The board encourages all residents to attend this meeting and the section of the agenda affords them opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves, state whether they are a resident of the Elwood School District or any organization that represent this meeting. Comments related to district business and any other agenda items should be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed three minutes. Board policy 1230. Questions or comments concerned and matters that are not on the agenda will be taken under consideration and may be discontinued by the president. Public discussion and matters related to staff, students and others, or others, at which the reputations or privacy to the right of due process can in some way be violated is prohibited. Sorry about that. It's been a long time since I...
Hi, my name is Janet Cruz and I'm a resident and a parent here at Elwood. I wanted to thank Dr. Hull and everyone in the special ed for that, the literature club that you have at Harley has been such a great advantage. My son has loved every minute of the literature club and I'm so grateful that this was added to Harley. I, he, there's a lot of students that I've seen that were very focused. There were a bunch of parents talking, you know, in the morning for the literature club. So I'm very happy about that. I also wanted to thank you, the board, for the special ed initiative and the academic initiative. It's something that I was... It's something that I was, you know, I've always spoke about, that we need more academic initiatives. And hearing the special ed initiative is something that I think the community needs to learn more about, that department. So I really thank you so much for giving us that presentation. It was really something that we needed to hear. One of the questions that I have on the budget, there were some line items in the expenditures, and I saw for reading, there was only $1,000 put in the budget for reading. And then there's something else called the Teaching Special Schools. There's only $1,587 budgeted for that. I mean, there's other line items on the budget that have way more that is being put towards those initiatives. But I think for reading, $1,000, it's something that's very, very small number that if we're looking at academics in our school district, that's really something that we need to work and strive for. The reading, the writing, and all of the other initiatives that the special ed presentation spoke about. I talk about this all the time, but I think it's important for our children's future, especially with the pandemic and the two years that they had, you know, with masks, being at home, not having the, you know, being in school. It's really something that we need to put more. And I think $1,000 is something that, you know, we could spend buying a furniture or a piece of, a chair or something.
Ms. Cruz, I want to interrupt. I just want to make sure. I definitely spent more than $1,000 on reading. I'd love to, if you want, to get back on that.
Yes, please.
For sure.
I was just shocked. I was shocked at the line item that said $1,000. I'm like, really? Reading $1,000?
I can ask Ms. Dunkle to elaborate on specifically what that line item is. But, Mrs. Cruz, I assure you, a good portion of the district's budget, more than 75% of our district's budget is specifically on the instructional program. Within that instructional program, the greatest percentage of that is salaries. Greatest percentage of our salaries are our teachers. We have over 190 teachers dedicated to providing all services to our students. Amongst that group are a good number of certified reading specialists that work with our students every day. Many of the programs that they specialize in were just highlighted by Mrs. Kelly Gorman, whether it's the Wilson Reading Plan or the Orton-Gillingham Program. That's all reading. So all of that presentation, if we needed to put a dollar figure on the amount of money we invest in our reading program, it's in the multi-millions. So that individual line is referenced to what...
I just wanted to know what the $1,000 is going towards.
We can get to that.
Yeah, I mean, off the top of my head, it sounds like a materials and supplies type of line, but all of the line items that you see, a lot of those are designated for New York State for specific categories. But reading sometimes falls under special ed, so the reading is throughout the budget. That specific line item, it's, I would say, misrepresentative. But the $1,000 is most likely for materials and supplies. But, yeah, as Dr. Boss had mentioned, there is a lot more money spent on reading than simply $1,000. Again, when we try to be extremely transparent with the community on all these things, but when we, you know, when we put forward some of these, some of this information, it can be misleading because of specific codes or guidelines that we have from New York State. But I assure you, as Dr. Boss had said, there is much more than $1,000 being spent on reading.
So maybe just like a little bullet in there saying, reading, this is like, you know, for, you know, school supplies or something like that. So it looks like just reading is getting a thousand dollars.
We appreciate the feedback because we wouldn't want other community members to have an equal concern. So when we present the budget to the community, we try to give an overview of how we're spending the money. So the residents and our taxpayers are confident that we're spending it wisely, so we appreciate the feedback.
Right, and I would think that, I'm just saying, we've gotten some feedback from the community tonight that I think will help guide where the presentation for the budget hearing is going to go, just to clarify some of these items that may be misleading.
So, and one more thing on the special ed's presentation. There was one slide that said it was short-term initiatives for the Literature Club and all the Summer Boost Program. Is that something that we're going to look to make it permanent? Because it's really something, again, I keep on stating, you start at school, at the elementary. Once you get to high school, your habit's already done.
The short answer is yes, Mrs. Cruz. The challenge that we have before us in our short- and long-term financial planning is that many of the programs we prioritize right now for closing that gap, lessening the impact of COVID, and really remediating many of our students are grant-funded through a three-year federal grant. Next year's year two. When we're planning next year's budget, it will have to be with a very fine-tuned lens of what is going to go away at the end of the grant and what needs to become part of the district's regular operating budget. So yes, the clock is ticking, and we are evaluating exactly what our priorities are so we can decide what has an end date and what needs to continue in perpetuity.
Thank you so much. And one final plug.
And we'll email you tomorrow specifically what that budget code is.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, I'll grab your email.
Can I do a final plug?
Yeah, I can grab your email though at the end of the meeting. If you just hang aside, we want to get your email so we could get you an answer to that question.
Awesome.
Thank you.
We have Mrs. Cruz's email.
You have it? There you go.
He has it. All you guys have it.
We have it.
So one quick plug, the SEPTA t-shirt, it's awesome. One of the children in sixth grade, he's, I love this kid. Please go and buy a long-sleeved shirt for the fall, a short sleeve for the summer. It's so much, it's so, it was so awesome seeing this child really put his heart and soul into this logo. So please go out there and buy those shirts.
And join SEPTA.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Cruz.
Kimberly Cameron, resident Elwood, I just want a clarification on the bond. So you said it was $54 million. What's the duration of the bond years and the interest rate?
Yes, it was $34 million.
Oh, it was 34, okay.
It's 10:15 at night, you're good.
Ms. Dunkle could give an even more elaborate explanation, but the borrowing that we do is either a period of...
The bond.
Go ahead. I don't want to say the wrong thing.
Okay, so it's 15 at one interest rate?
It depends. I think our last interest rate was, Rose, if correct me, from 1.6 or 1.4. When we borrow for the bond, we don't borrow $34 million upfront. We can only borrow for the amount of money that represents the projects that have been approved. So the bond project has four to five phases. So phase one was the roof project, so we borrowed roughly, I don't know, I'm going to say $6 or $7 million. That's one piece. And then we go, when we move to phase two, when those projects are approved, we borrow a secondary amount. So each borrowing is not the same exact percentage, but all of the percentages we have received have been extremely low. And again, that's attributed to our Moody's rating and our financial picture that we spoke about.
Okay, and that's currently our only, like, floating bond? Do we have other bonds outstanding?
I believe we have a bond from 2002, well, that is falling off in a year or two.
Okay, within the same interest rate?
I would have to go back and look at that. I'm not sure.
Well, thank you very much for the clarity. I apologize for that ever.
Thank you. Cameron, seeing no other residents in the audience, seeing no staff being residents of Elwood, may I make a motion to adjourn. Motion, Dr. Siddiqui, and one second, I'll take the second motion. Mrs. Bobalito, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank once again Ms. Cedar. It is unheard of to see district treasurer be at our board meetings and to be the support that you are to Ms. Dunkle and through the budget process. We just can't thank you enough. You're so dedicated and to stay here till 10:15 at night, to just be able to answer a 1.6% interest rate question to help, you know, it says a lot, and we really appreciate it. So I had a motion, I had a second. All in favor? All in favor? 5-0. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.